Don't say that wrong.
I know.
How do we look out there?
What's that?
Our coordinating outfits.
It's a screw ball.
Very, very attonal.
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 Kelly, can you go put on your other sweater? We can start without that. I don't know why he did that. Oh. Okay, I didn't know. I won't take any, so I'll put it right there. All right, little tardy, but 7:04. But the row, uh, time being 7:04, we call the Hastings City Council meeting to order. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, and let the row reflect that we do have a full quorum tonight. Uh, council members, are there any corrections to the minutes from the meeting on October 20th? Okay. Comments from the audience at this time? The council would hear any comments from the audience. Who would like to speak to the council at this time? Anyone wish to speak? Anyone on Zoom? No one on Zoom? Okay. Councilmen members, any items to be considered? Okay. Council, I would accept a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved, Your Honor.
Councilmember Leifeld with a second by councilmember Pembel. Any discussion, council? All those in favor of the motion state by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed to that motion state by saying nay. And that motion prevails. Tonight, under a wording of contracts, administration, administrative penalties and special charges for diseased tree removals. For these items, we will have an introduction by our city administrator, Dan Ruchichia, followed by a public hearing and a potential action by council. Dan?
Thank you. Um, this actually has multiple parts to it. Uh, one, following statutory procedures, and this was scheduled by council about a month ago, uh, for a public hearing, uh, so that, um, presumably if any of the, uh, people or property owners listed here, uh, have comments, uh, this would be their chance to, to speak on their behalf. Um, after the public hearing, uh, we have, uh, two or three actions to recommend. Uh, one is specific to the public hearing itself, saying, here's a resolution, uh, listing about $13,000 of unpaid bills, and we're going to levy those as special assessments against their tax, their, their property tax bills. Um, that's the action specific, actually tied to the hearing, but the others are also related to emerald ash bores and tree rufles, so it's easier to sort of package them all in one place on the agenda instead of having it keep popping up, uh, throughout the evening. Uh, the second resolution, uh, I actually would recommend you not act on tonight. Um, it is, there are, um, four properties that, uh, sold during this process. It was an extended process, uh, and, uh, uncollectible as assessments, uh, but they are, uh, something that, uh, I would like to talk with the, uh, finance staff about other means of collection and, uh, being able to pursue those. So recommend not doing that second resolution tonight. I think it's premature. Uh, and then the third action, um, uh, as, as point of explanation, when, when we, uh, treat or remove a, a tree for EAB, provide a packet of information to that property owner, um, uh, tell them that, that they can take care of it themselves. If, uh, if they don't, we will do it and we will bill them. So that list of whatever it is, 20, 30 of them, are ones that just decided not to pay the bill, we'll collect. Uh, the third action is one of those property owners, uh, specifically asked, and it's in the packet of information, that, hey, I would like to enter an assessment agreement, waive the formalities of the hearing, uh, pay it over five years, uh, with interest. Um, so the third action also is an assessment, but it's, it's a different one than the list of ones that just decided to, uh, let the process play out. Um, with that, I can, I can certainly take some questions. Obviously, you also need to, although there's nobody here, open and close the public hearing.
Sure. Thanks, Dan. At this time, I'll open the public hearing. Anyone wish to speak at this point? Anyone wish to speak at this point? At this time, I will close the public hearing. Open discussion for council. Council? Seeing no lights, I would assume that I would need a motion.
So moved, Your Honor.
Councilmember Leifeld with a motion, and councilmember House with a second. Any discussion, council? Councilmember Lawrence.
Just as specified, uh, like Dan said, um, were you, councilmember Leifeld, were you saying one, not two and three?
Under...
Under the, um, the ash bore...
So the resolution certifying unpaid administrative penalties?
Yes.
And special charges for the deceased tree removals. So just item B, under administrative penalties.
Yep.
So the motion is for one and three?
One.
One only.
Yeah, one only. Um, I could include that motion to allow for B, C, you pulled D.
For clarification, staff's recommendation is, uh, approve Resolution B certifying the assessments and approve Agreement D, uh, for that single assessment, and, uh, tonight, not act on Resolution C, writing those off. Uh, we'll bring that back in two weeks.
Clarifying motion, Your Honor.
Okay. Thank you, councilmember Leifeld.
I would like to make a motion to approve the administrative penalties and special charges as outlined in the recommendation to include certifying unpaid administrative penalties and special charges, as well as the Assessment Deferral Program for 1833 Maple Street.
Thank you, councilmember Leifeld, and councilmember House seconds that. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion state by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed to that motion state by saying nay. And that motion prevails. Under community development tonight, we have a resolution for a variance for City Code Chapter 152A, Mississippi River Corridor Critical Area, Mississippi River Greenway Trail. And for this introduction, we have our Community Development Director, John Ensmann. Welcome, John.
Thank you, Mayor, City Council members. Couple of actions related to variances on a trail reconstruction project here. I think the easiest thing is to take a look at the setting itself. So we're looking at the steep trail that presently exists between Eagle Bluff Drive and down by the sand dam to, uh, Lake Rebecca. So if you've all been on that trail, you know it's very steep. It has a very sharp turn. Dakota County, who manages the Mississippi Greenway Trail, is proposing a reconstruction of that. Since the original trail was constructed some 20, 30 years ago, uh, different ordinances have come into play which regulate the Mississippi River. One of those being our Mississippi River Critical Corridor Ordinance, which we adopted a couple of years ago. The goal of that ordinance is to establish certain parameters for vegetation removal, disturbance of steep slopes, disturbance of use, et cetera. So there's a couple of things related to the reconstruction of this trail that fall into, not into harmony with the ordinance that we have. So we are looking for three variances to that. Uh, the variances, they themselves are as follows. One of them is construction of a hard surface trail on the face of a bluff with greater than 30% slope. So if you take a look at this map here, anything that has slopes greater than 30% is in this little narrow yellow section here. So you're coming up from the sand dam here, up the hill, this gets to be pretty steep on your right-hand side. The trail would be reconstructed within this area, would have impact within it. The other one would be construction of a retaining wall into what's termed the Bluff Impact Zone. The Bluff Impact Zone on this, on this map here is the area in blue. This is an area that's between, that's a certain distance back from the river itself that has special protections within it. So we would be building a retaining wall within there, or Dakota County would be, and actually, there'd be two of them. One is an existing one, one would be a new one within there. So that would be another one of the variances. The other one would be for the construction of a retaining wall that is in excess of five feet. So there's a five-foot limit on retaining wall under the Mississippi River Critical Corridor Ordinance, ordinance. This would be seven feet tall itself. So those are the variances that we have. So what are we trying to accomplish, or Dakota County trying to accomplish with this trail project? As you know, if you've been down the trail, it's very steep. So the biggest thing that they're trying to do is to reduce the steepness of this. By doing this, generally, they're cutting into the slope to make it less steep going through there. So it would meet more of your handicapped accessibility requirements, uh, that it would not meet today. The other would be, when you take a look at the trail itself, existing, you've got a very sharp turn right here, and they're looking to have that turn be less sharp. So improve the safety of the trail itself. Other things going on down here, if you follow the existing trail, which is here, you can see that the, there's, they're reconstructing the newer trail in the orange. In most circumstances, this orange trail is located a little further back, further away from the homes that are here along Eagle Bluff Drive than the present trail is. You can see in this location where it comes closest, existing trail is here, new trail is here. So that'll provide, uh, a little more separation between there, which will be good. So the other thing is this overlook area, which I think nine times out of 10, when I ride down this trail, I take the wrong way, will hopefully be fixed so people don't take the wrong way and be shortened. Uh, this thing goes on quite a ways. This will be vacated, uh, and deconstructed, reforested, and then this area here, uh, will become the new overlook. So that's generally what the project's going to be. What we have jurisdiction over tonight are the variances in the administration of the Mississippi River Corridor, Corridor Ordinance. So we did have our planning commission hold a public, or hold a hearing on October 27th. They did vote 6-0 to recommend approval of both the variances as presented by staff. We had some representatives from Dakota County to explain the project. We did have one homeowner come in, uh, spoke. He was looking more questions related to any additional easements that Dakota County would need for construction. Uh, they stated at the meeting they would not. He seemed to be satisfied with that. So that is the project that we have before us tonight. What we have before you is a resolution that would, uh, rate, a recommendation to grant all three of those variances. Again, with a variance resolution, it does require the six of seven council members for support, and I can stand for any questions. Thank you.
Thanks, John. Any questions, council? Councilmember Leifeld?
John, this seems like a no-brainer. It seems like a win-win, right, for any of us who've ever been on that trail and almost ended up in the dirt around the circle?
[laughing]
And coming down around, going into the dike, and praying there's nobody coming up the other side. Um, I do have a question, just to confirm. The circled area over here where we have a bench, nice spot to stop and sit when you do take the right by accident, John?
Yes.
There's a bench there, so you can stop, and it's gorgeous. So will we, I think you said at the, where you took a right there, there will be an outlook or an overlook right there instead?
Yes. The bench, we did confirm at the planning commission meeting that the, the bench that's over here will be relocated to this point, so it'll, it'll remain.
I love this. I think it's a, a great idea. Um, I would make a motion to approve, um, all three variances, um, as listed in the resolution.
Great. Thank you, councilmember Leifeld. Councilmember Pembel?
I would second that motion.
Thank you. Any additional discussion, council? Councilmember Verachov?
Thank you, Your Honor. John, when I was reading the notes from the planning commission, and I, I support this, um, but there was a note in there that to catch my eye about that if Dakota County needed to possibly move some trees, could you just walk us through what that might look like for those potential homeowners there?
Sure.
And what that process normally is when the county has to do something like that?
I do.
Thank you.
First of all, would be a construction easement itself. Uh, they're not planning to have any further construction easement, and the grading activity would be further away from the property line. But if they were to remove the trees, part of the process here is an administrative permit for vegetation removal and grading that they will go through with more detailed plans. We'll be out on site looking at that. If it's a situation in which there's a tree that needs to be removed that was not intended to be removed, there's replacement values for that.
Thank you, councilmember Verachov. Any other questions? Okay, we do have a motion and a second. All those in favor of the motion state by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed to that motion state by saying nay. And that motion prevails.
Thank you.
Thank you, John. Tonight, under administration, as always, it is the first meeting of the month, so we will have a PFAS update. And this introduction will be given by our city administrator, Dan Ruchichia.
Thank you. Uh, obviously, this is just an update, non-action item, but I can also take questions. Um, construction proceeds, which is nice. Uh, and I think the most notable piece to the construction is the, uh, although the weather's cooperating, the, the raw water lines on, uh, 7th and going up to North Frontage are, are very much watching the weather so that, um, what, whatever work we do can be buried and buttoned up and make sure that we have a passable road over the winter. We don't want to, uh, have that be open. So they're only taking on segments that they're, they're confident they're able to, uh, get completed. So it, construction proceeds. Uh, other piece to note, um, this goes back a couple of months with our budget discussions, but at present, we are looking at a 10, 10, and 10% increase in water rates. 10% January 1, 10% mid-year in July, and 10% at the end of the year, uh, January 1st of 2027, uh, for this next phase. Uh, we still got, uh, another phase beyond it. The reason for this, uh, stepped-in increase is, uh, I think will become apparent with the next couple of bullet points, but it's a matter of, uh, wanting to, to, um, basically minimize the impact on our residents and businesses. If we have other funding come forward later in the year, uh, we don't want to raise the rates more than we need to. So instead of doing 30%, actually 37% January 1, uh, let's do 10% and see where we're at in July, and if we have to do another increase, and how much that might be. But right now, we're looking at 10, 10, and 10. Uh, realize this is a burden, uh, which is why we are very much trying to get outside funding, um, which is the next couple of bullets. Last week, we had the Senate Capital Investment Committee come out and visit, and we gave them an overview of our project and the need for funding and the impact on our residents, our businesses. Um, and later this week, we have the House Capital Investment Committee coming out for a similar, a similar visit. Uh, last couple of years, we've definitely, uh, gotten our story out there, uh, built some good relationships with legislators so that they understand our project and, uh, believe that we have some support for it, but it depends on, uh, political and legislative process and a bonding bill, and some of that's outside our hands. But, uh, important steps, and, and very good that those two committees are, are visiting Hastings. Uh, the other piece that's, uh, trying to find funding is the environmental investigations that the Minnesota Pollution Control Agency, uh, has been doing in-house, as well as requiring some study by the 3M Company. Those should be wrapping up late this year, next couple of months, and, uh, depending on those results, maybe it means a, uh, connection or connections, uh, and, uh, additional access to 3M settlement funds. Maybe it means additional study, and it's not determined at this point, uh, but those studies are, are coming to an end here in the next couple of months. But again, looking for, uh, funding so it's not entirely on our, our, uh, ratepayers, our customers. Uh, the last piece that I think is worth noting, uh, which is also on tonight's agenda later on, is last Wednesday, uh, the 29th, we received notice that, um, let me get the name right. Pizza on 50th and France, DBA, uh, Carboni's at Hastings, uh, has filed a lawsuit against the city regarding their closure. Um, at this point, um, we are discussing with council. Later this evening, we'll be going into closed session so we can discuss with our city attorney and other, acknowledging that there's really nothing I can say at the moment, uh, but it is, uh, part of the process we're going through. But with that, I can take any questions on PFAS update.
Thank you, Dan. Any questions, council? All right. Then moving under administration as well, City Hall project, a budget amendment. You may continue, Dan.
Thank you. Uh, this keeps our accountants happy. Um, a, a project that, that obviously has had several years to it, uh, a couple of prior, uh, budget amendments by city council, uh, multiple funding sources to it, um, a matter of, uh, Chris wanting to get this, our finance manager, Chris Idemiller, wanting to get this all captured in one place, in one resolution, so that, uh, it, it's nice and tidy and can answer any questions from the auditor later, uh, later this spring. Total price comes out to about $5.5 million, which is a bit higher than we had been anticipating. Uh, some of that is related to, um, uh, budget amendments approved, uh, even over a year ago, uh, and some of it is new proposed to have budget amendments approved tonight. I want to outline those. One is a installation of a vaporizer tank, including, uh, any of the, um, electric and, and other pieces added on to that. That's related to our, uh, backup propane for the boilers. Uh, and really, it's a, a piece that is needed, uh, so that the underground propane tank, uh, doesn't have trouble if we have a very cold winter. Uh, that's about $76,000. That work will likely be based on weather, uh, some, some of the equipment purchased now, but the work actually done in the spring, uh, after winter. Um, other item, uh, for a, uh, budget amendment and change order tonight is additional plaster repair. Uh, this is interior to the building. You know, we, you know, it's one thing to keep calling it a roof project, but leaky roof means that there's damage to, to some of the walls interior. Uh, and, uh, unfortunately, uh, when the architect put the project out to bid, there was a page missing in the, the bid package. So some of the walls were not proposed to be fixed. So why are you fixing this wall and repairing cracks, but not this wall? Because it wasn't in the bid package. And, and, and talking with our staff, it's, well, maybe it was an interior wall versus an exterior wall, maybe it was water damage versus just old plaster. No, it turned out to be a, a mistake, and a page was not included in the bids. Um, if it had been, wouldn't be asking for a budget amendment tonight. They would've said, here's the whole project, and that additional work would've been $46,000. So in essence, it's money that we would've been needing to pay anyways, but do, um, would, would've much rather known, here's what the amount is, rather than coming in here in the last few weeks saying, we need another $46,000. But that's what's behind, uh, needing to do additional plaster work beyond what was planned, is it was, it was not originally bid. Uh, additional pieces of the proposed budget amendment here, about $10,000 for some additional sealing and insulating in the crawl space underneath the building to, uh, keep, uh, moisture from, from getting into the building, and then about $3,000 for an additional brass plaque in the entry next to the one when we put the annex on to, uh, note the, uh, investment in, uh, this historic building that we're doing here in 2025. So all said and done, the resolution that's recommended captures just an overview of the whole project, uh, but in, in, within it are those specific, uh, budget amendments for the vaporizer, plaster repair, sealing, and insulating in the crawl space and the brass plaque. But with that, I can take questions. Thank you.
Thanks, Dan. Any questions, council? All right. Then moving under administration as well, City Hall project, a budget amendment. You may continue, Dan.
Thank you. Uh, this keeps our accountants happy. Um, a, a project that, that obviously has had several years to it, uh, a couple of prior, uh, budget amendments by city council, uh, multiple funding sources to it, um, a matter of, uh, Chris wanting to get this, our finance manager, Chris Idemiller, wanting to get this all captured in one place, in one resolution, so that, uh, it, it's nice and tidy and can answer any questions from the auditor later, uh, later this spring. Um, total price comes out to about $5.5 million, which is a bit higher than we had been anticipating. Uh, some of that is related to, um, uh, budget amendments approved, uh, even over a year ago, uh, and some of it is new proposed to have budget amendments approved tonight. I want to outline those. One is a installation of a vaporizer tank, including, uh, any of the, um, electric and, and other pieces added on to that. That's related to our, uh, backup propane for the boilers. Uh, and really, it's a, a piece that is needed, uh, so that the underground propane tank, uh, doesn't have trouble if we have a very cold winter. Uh, that's about $76,000. That work will likely be based on weather, uh, some, some of the equipment purchased now, but the work actually done in the spring, uh, after winter. Um, other item, uh, for a, uh, budget amendment and change order tonight is additional plaster repair. Uh, this is interior to the building. You know, we, you know, it's one thing to keep calling it a roof project, but leaky roof means that there's damage to, to some of the walls interior. Uh, and, uh, unfortunately, uh, when the architect put the project out to bid, there was a page missing in the, the bid package. So some of the walls were not proposed to be fixed. So why are you fixing this wall and repairing cracks, but not this wall? Because it wasn't in the bid package. And, and, and talking with our staff, it's, well, maybe it was an interior wall versus an exterior wall, maybe it was water damage versus just old plaster. No, it turned out to be a, a mistake, and a page was not included in the bids. Um, if it had been, wouldn't be asking for a budget amendment tonight. They would've said, here's the whole project, and that additional work would've been $46,000. So in essence, it's money that we would've been needing to pay anyways, but do, um, would, would've much rather known, here's what the amount is, rather than coming in here in the last few weeks saying, we need another $46,000. But that's what's behind, uh, needing to do additional plaster work beyond what was planned, is it was, it was not originally bid. Uh, additional pieces of the proposed budget amendment here, about $10,000 for some additional sealing and insulating in the crawl space underneath the building to, uh, keep, uh, moisture from, from getting into the building, and then about $3,000 for an additional brass plaque in the entry next to the one when we put the annex on to, uh, note the, uh, investment in, uh, this historic building that we're doing here in 2025. So all said and done, the resolution that's recommended captures just an overview of the whole project, uh, but in, in, within it are those specific, uh, budget amendments for the vaporizer, plaster repair, sealing, and insulating in the crawl space, and the brass plaque. But with that, I can take questions. Thank you.
Thanks, Dan. Any questions? Uh, councilmember Pembel?
Dan, is the, are we just about to the point of wrap-up here? Are we going to be? I see that they were working on the overhang, uh, over the weekend, and it's like, okay, what else is going on? There's, they haven't come up with another something? Just asking.
Thank you, councilmember Pembel.
The exterior work is all but done. bid from a competitor, but we really don't know. If that page had been in there, we know that, you know, if, I don't have a specific hour amount, if here's 100 hours of extra work, there would have been requirement to pay for 100 hours of extra work and do that workload. So it would have meant higher bid costs, but if there were competition among others, don't know how that might have played out.
So then, just to clarify on the budget document that we're looking at from Chris Antimiller, the total cost of the project has risen to 5.575 from 5.018. So roughly just over half a million. It's not just that one, thank you.
It's also some of the pieces of the boiler, the vaporizing, change orders that we already approved a year ago related to some of the wood framing within the corner domes, the water table on the main dome. So it's a number of pieces that are driving that 500,000, not just this extra plaster and missing page.
Okay, thanks for that clarification. Appreciate that. And then I guess I just, as I look at this number, that's not $50,000, that's a half a million dollars. That concerns me. I mean, because we do leave a, in bids, right? There's, I forget what Ryan always refers to it as, there's usually that area of contingency. How was, what was our contingency on this project?
I do not know what the contingency was. I can't answer that this evening.
So this isn't up for any sort of, oh, you are looking for a prove of resolution?
Yep.
I'm concerned at the, a half a million dollars is not just a, to me, that doesn't seem like costs went up, lumber went up, you know, because we know things have gone up, that happens. But this, to me, seems concerning. I guess I'd, it might be beneficial to know more about this, I guess? Anyone?
Thank you, Councilmember Verachov.
Thank you, Your Honor. I agree with Councilmember Leifeld. That sounds like the beginning to like a fabulous, like spy novel or something, right? The page of the missing book that costs $46,000. So I would kind of like to know a little bit more about this as well. But actually, what I was going to ask, Your Honor, is if you would permit me, would it be okay if I asked Dan a couple of ques-
Absolutely.
Okay. I already know the answers to these, but I get a lot of these from neighbors, and I think a lot of people have questions about this. Overall, is this project within what we thought in terms of the budget? Over budget, under budget, within?
A couple of years ago, we were, well, a couple of years ago, we had it pegged at just over $5 million. So it's about a half million higher than that.
Okay, which is our question tonight. Would we say that this project is coming in on time in terms of where we thought we would be in terms of how long it would take to complete this project?
The contractual requirements are the end of this calendar year.
Thank you. And so here's hoping, we think so. And then there has been an enormous amount of grant funding and other funds that have come forward to help to offset the costs of this project. Is that correct?
We had a $2 million state bonding bill towards this project. About $200,000, I think, was towards some of the tuck pointing from, I think it was a historic preservation grant. And we had a little over $2 million of ARPA funds that we elected to allocate to this. So in total, I'm trying to do the math, and I had, what, about 4.3 or more million dollars towards this?
Mayor, may I ask another question?
May.
Thank you. And then all of these things were necessary for us to maintain the historical building, the prestige that comes with having a beautiful old building like this in our community. These were things that needed to be done.
Yes, from two standpoints. One, we were having water coming through the roof. You know, you need to fix the roof. And unfortunately, on a historic building, that's a pretty extensive fix. It's not just reshingling it.
Sure.
The other piece that, or a couple other pieces with it, we did not look at just the roof, but the envelope of the entire building. So a matter of tuck pointing or mentioning the sealing and insulation in the crawl space, other efforts in order to keep moisture, humidity from coming into the building, not just through the roof, but in order to help maintain the internal atmosphere. And then also, along those lines, replacing the boiler system, which was coming up on needing to be replaced anyways, replacing it, as well as the heat return elements. Basically, again, here's a, it's not what the boiler's for, but using it as part of a humidity control so that we're maintaining this facility, this asset. I mention that HVAC piece because the boilers themselves, forget about any of the building roof and envelope repair, the boilers themselves, I think we had budgeted for $350,000 for this building, and then additionally, next door at the police station needing to be replaced, and we were able to upsize it and put in one set that serves both buildings. So it actually was some cost savings there on some expenses that we would have been facing in this timeframe or in the next year or two anyways.
Thank you. My point being there is I think that it can be hard for some of our neighbors to necessarily understand when they see a project that's been going on for a really long time and that we know has a big price tag, and that it sounds like it's so easy to just say, oh, it's another six months, or it's another this much amount of money, especially when we're talking about our water crisis and things like that. But in reality, this is a budget, a timeframe, grant funding, and necessary improvements that we actually did need. Thank you, Your Honor. Thank you, Dan.
And I'd emphasize that last piece about necessary improvements. It's a building that we use every day, and you need to maintain those assets, and you got to fix that leaking roof. I know that when we were talking about doing the historic repairs five, six years ago, there were people that said, well, just build a new building. That would be much more than $5.5 million, and we would lose this really iconic piece of Hastings in the process. So really, it's a big project, a lengthy project, but necessary, and it's part of owning property sometimes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Verachov. Councilmember Beck?
As an accountant, I just want clarification. Tonight, the only reason it says 5.575 from 5.018 is because the council has already approved $450,000 up to this point, correct?
Not quite that math.
Like of improvements, there have been 450 or like extras.
There, I think, is closer to 200 or 300 previously approved. Although I pointed out the $46,000 for plaster repair, there's also $76,000 for a vaporizer. There's also $10,000 for additional insulation.
And that's what's up for tonight?
It's all included in that number.
Yes.
And if-
And Chris just wants this as an all-encompassing document, and I understand that.
Chris wanted a bottom-line number, and I'm emphasizing, if you approve the bottom-line number, it means we're completing work. If you say you don't approve that bottom-line number, we will not be completing this project, at least not on this schedule.
That's what I just wanted clarification for. I understood that Chris just wanted a bottom-line number for auditors, but, so for everybody listening, they understand that that's just an auditor's dream, is to have one bottom-line. So, thank you, Dan.
Thank you, Councilmember Beck. Any other discussion? Councilmember Lawrence?
Just one more clarification. So can I ask Dan, sorry? I know we're beating the dead.
No, you're fine.
So over the last, how long is this project going? Two years, three years? Two years. We've, stuff has been coming to the council, and we say, yep, we need to prove it. Yep, we need to prove it. So now we have a different list of different things going on that we've approved throughout the last couple of years. And now we're saying, the accountant just says, hey, can we clean this up, get it all in one document, saying, so essentially, we've already gone through and said, yep, we're going to pay that, yep, we're going to pay that, we're going to add the boiler over here, we're going to add the plaster up here, we're going to add the, and now we just have one document saying, so now obviously, that looks like, oh my goodness, that's a huge number. But really, we've already talked about all these different talking points. Okay, thank you.
Perfectly put.
Thank you, Councilmember Lawrence.
And I suspect that the, whatever it is, about $130,000, $140,000 that's new tonight is probably the amount that's beyond the contingency. Contingency might even cover a portion of that. But the pieces previously approved, I recall seeing those memos saying it's within the contingency. It's this last pieces at the end that, quite frankly, I got a bit frustrated and said, no more adding stuff on until we know that it's a complete list of everything that's being asked.
Councilmember Pembel?
After all this discussion, and hopefully, we have the ability or the understanding that the end is close, I move that we pay the bills on this and put our accountant in a good feeling.
Thank you, Councilmember Pembel. Councilmember Beck seconds it? Okay. And any new discussion, council? Councilmember House?
May we also be sent a detailed line item of all of the prices for what is being put in, please? Just to have a more reviewed package for afterwards as well. May we have a detailed, like itemized receipt for each item and what each item will be costing us as well as the city? Sorry, my voice is a little harsh.
Thank you, Councilmember Ross, and Councilmember Beck.
On that, I think in the future, we can also think more while discussing budget or cost increases of maybe not just saying, oh, we need this, let's approve that, and putting a little bit more, more line, yeah, context line item into it. That's all.
Thank you, Councilmember Beck. We do have a motion and a second. No other discussion? All those in favor of the motion state by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed to that motion state by saying nay. And that motion prevails. Thank you, Dan. Under administration, we also now will go into closed meeting pursuant to Minnesota Statute 13D dot 05 subdivision 3B for attorney-client privileged communication pending litigation. First, we will do announcements. Council, do you have any announcements? Okay, I have a few. Tomorrow, outdoor winter clothing swap. Bring your gently-used and clean outdoor winter clothing you no longer want to, no longer want to our swap and bring home items that are new to you. Tuesday, November 4, at the Rambling River Center in Farmington, accepting coats, jackets, mittens, gloves, winter hats, scarves, winter boots, and snow pants in all sizes. No item donation is necessary to shop the swap. Friends of Pleasant Hill Library hosts its used book sale Thursday to Sunday, November 6 through November 9. Recycle all lights with the Hastings Holiday Lights drop-off collection. Residents can drop off unwanted light strands to the Joint Maintenance Facility, 920 10th Street West, during the holiday season from November 15 to January 31. Monday, November 10, 7:00 p.m., there is a Public Safety Committee meeting. Monday, November 10, 7:00 p.m., there's also a Planning Commission meeting. Wednesday, November 12, 6:00 p.m., Arts and Culture Commission. Thursday, November 13, is a HEDRA meeting at 6:30. Monday, November 17, 5:30 p.m., council, we do have a police department overview workshop, and 7:00 p.m. council meeting. City council has, the city council meet in closed section for an attorney-client privileged discussion of litigation strategy in the matter of Pizza on 50th and France Inc., DBA Carboni's in Hastings versus City of Hastings. City Attorney Greta Burknis is present confidentially, is confidentiality is necessary in order to allow a candid and open discussion with the city council about the litigation, including defense strategies and possibilities for resolution. Such a discussion happening in open session could jeopardize the city's legal position. Closing the meeting is authorized by Minnesota Statute 13D 05 subdivision 3B. I will therefore seek a motion to move into closed session, closed-door meeting session. Councilmember Pembel first, and a Councilmember Leifeld second. Any additional discussion, council? Okay. All those in favor of the motion state by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed to that motion state by saying nay. The city will now move into a closed-door session. No voting will occur, and no action will be taken in the closed-door session. I will now call the city, oh, sorry, next room, next page.